Good afternoon. I'd like to call the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Wednesday, October 8th, 2025, to order. Notice of option to recess into executive session pursuant to ARS 38431.02. Notice is hereby given to the members of the commission and to the general public that at this meeting, the commission may vote to go into executive session, which would not be open to the public, for legal advice and discussion with the commission's attorney on any item listed on this agenda pursuant to ARS 38431.03A3. And now we'll do roll call.
Thank you. Carol Mandino?
Present.
Mary Norton?
She's excused.
Christine Sheehy?
Present.
CJ Lukey? I don't know if that's right.
That is correct. Present.
Ian Sharp?
Present.
Megan Weller?
Present.
Joshua Mayher?
Present.
Okay. So right now, we're on item three, which is open call to the public. At this time, any member of the public may address the commission on any subject within our jurisdiction that is not scheduled before the commission today. Due to open meeting laws, the commission cannot discuss or act on items presented during this portion of the meeting or the agenda. To address the commission on an item that is on the agenda, please wait for me to call for public comment at the time the item is heard. So we'll move on to item four, which is approval of the minutes of the special meeting of September 29th, 2025. Is there a motion to accept the minutes as written?
So moved.
So is there a second?
Second.
So it was moved by Commissioner Sheehy and seconded by Commissioner Lukey that the minutes be approved. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The motion carries. Then we'll move into item five A under General Business, and this is PZ-2500027. And it's talking about middle housing. And we'll let Tiffany?
Thank you.
Take the mic.
So I have a high-level presentation, and I also have two versions of the code, and we can go through these code details if you want. It is sort of a lengthy amendment, I think. I was surprised when I asked. Sixty-nine pages of text amendment. So, but there's a reason for that. Just lots of different sections of code get changed here as part of this particular amendment. So I can go back and forth if that works for you, but I'm going to try to give you the high level, what is this actually really doing? All right, so the state legislature passed House Bill 2721 titled Middle Housing. And it basically says that on or before January 1st, 2026, a municipality with a population of 75,000 or more must authorize by ordinance and incorporate into its development regulations, zoning regulations, and other official controls, the development of duplexes, triplexes, fourplexes, and townhouses as a permitted use on both of the following: all lots zoned for single-family residential use within one mile of the municipality's central business district, and at least 20% of any new development of more than 10 contiguous acres. And I don't know if you remember way back when, but earlier this year, we started a round of work sessions with various commissions and council to discuss this amendment and how we would apply it within the city of Flagstaff. So we do not have an officially designated central business district. If we did, it likely falls over the downtown. This legislation, though, is specific. You can have multiple central business districts. It's not limited to just having one. So of course, you know, this is applying to cities across Arizona that are both large and small. So there are, I mean, when you think of like what Tucson's Central Business District looks like, it's so bizarre and different as opposed to maybe what ours would look like. However, if we were to draw a boundary around what we think of as our downtown, which is mostly historic downtown, and then you go about a mile out, it picks up a lot of our historic districts, and it picks up parts of Cherry Hill. It picks up Townsite, Plaza Vieja, Southside, areas that have already been inundated with middle housing building types. Part of our journey over the last two years and doing a code analysis process has been trying to understand how our code functions and works and how it either promotes or doesn't promote the development of housing. In that conversation, we looked at potential equity issues in our city and how we distribute zoning and allowed uses throughout the city. And so understanding that those neighborhoods that I just called out are also often listed as being those generally inequitably treated in terms of zoning. So putting a higher protection on single-family neighborhoods over neighborhoods like Southside who have zones like community commercial or residential, single-family neighborhood that allow a broader bit of uses. We went through a process of reaching out to several of the commissions. We went to the Heritage Preservation Commission, the Housing Commission, the Planning and Zoning Commission, and City Council to talk about how we would implement this particular code amendment. So the direction across the board was to look at implementing this citywide. So this will go across all of the zoning districts within the city of Flagstaff. While this is changing how we allow these housing types, the number-one controlling factor in all of the zoning districts does not change at this point in time, which is the density allowances of each of those zones. So that is staying consistent at this point in time. We are still working through, as part of that code analysis process, what those density changes might look like in the future. And again, that'll be across the board in terms of how we handle that with each particular zoning district. So while this may go into effect by the end of this year, it's not as if every property will then all of the sudden be able to have a fourplex because they would most likely not be large enough or have the allowances to have that number of units. It's just when and where you are able to have a fourplex, you're going to really get a lot of benefit out of this code. And we'll go through all of the other really positive things that it does for middle housing. I do want to point out that duplex, triplex, and fourplex are the, and townhouses, the way that the state defines them is much different than what you would think of. And you're going to see this played out in how we change the uses in the code to sort of simplify this conversation. When most people hear fourplex, they think four units in one building. However, the state statute defines it as four building or four units on a lot, either in a building, attached, or detached. So that's kind of confusing to many people because fourplex in the Webster's dictionary is a building. So bear with me through this process. Just keep in mind that when you hear fourplex, it's really talking about four units on a lot, okay? And triplex, three units on a lot, and so forth. Townhouse is really attached, single-family. All right. So I went through that whole stuff about our historic downtown. Let's talk about the other requirements of House Bill 2721. So we are not able to do any of the following. I prefer to write everything in the positive. The state sometimes likes to write it in the negative. But we're not able to discourage the development of middle housing through requirements or actions that individually or cumulatively make impractical the permitting, siting, or construction of middle housing. We're not able to restrict middle housing types to less than two floors. We're not able to restrict middle housing types to floor area ratio of less than 50%. We're not, we cannot set restrictions, permitting, or review process for middle housing that are more restrictive than those for single-family dwellings within the same zone. We are not able to require owner occupancy. Wouldn't want to, because honestly, who could manage enforcing that? We cannot require any structure to comply with the commercial building code or to contain a fire sprinkler. Those are outside of the codes that people let me touch. And then require more than one off-street parking space per unit. Okay. So what does that look like in terms of our zoning code? Well, we touched just about every little piece of it. It was fun. It was a good time. So we'll just dive in and talk about that administration and procedure and enforcement. These, this is more about our permitting review. General to all, public improvements and site planning design standards. We'll talk a little bit more about how these will no longer apply to four units and less, which actually could be a really positive thing towards increasing our housing stock. We'll talk about how we change each of the specific zoning districts and the land uses. We'll talk about those supplemental requirements, and then some changes we made to definitions. I will tell you, I snuck a few clerical changes in here, so I'll try to point those out when they're not really relevant to middle housing, but just I wasn't going to get to an end-of-the-year cleanup after writing this. So I recognize, like, I might just throw one or two things in here while I'm at it. All right. So let's talk about administration procedures and enforcement. What you're going to see here is concept plan review and site plan review. Probably the thing we hear internally the most, especially from smaller local developers, is, gosh, going through concept and site plan takes a lot of time. So what essentially changes here? If you are four units and less, you are going straight to building permit. That's what this change does. You skip the inter-division review, and you just go straight to that building permit review. We do that with duplex right now and below. So I think we're ready. I think, I think we're managed to do this, so it shouldn't be that big of a hurdle or burden. Staff likes to see the concept reviews as a way for us to really help a developer and make sure that they're meeting these other code requirements. But you're going to see a lot of these code requirements are being released as well. So there is less of a need to do concept and site plan review. There are a couple little just verbiage changes in our non-conforming provisions, just making sure that we are using the same terms throughout. Nothing substantive in non-conforming provisions. Just so you know, we tend to treat residential in a way where you can, if it was just completely destroyed, you would be able to replicate it in its exact form if it was legal, non-conforming. So general to all. Yes?
So I have a question. You know, with the ADUs, you have like eight plans that are approved. Is there any way to do like a plan approval for fourplexes, duplexes, triplexes? That might be that you have several out there that?
Yeah, we could.
Yeah. It's just an idea.
Yeah, actually, there's now a House bill out there that's requiring more of those model plans for single families. So I think there'll be more that has to be added to our library. So not just ADU, I think we'll have to go more towards the single-family route. But, you know, we, when we work with a developer who does like the same model over and over again, we'll do a model approval. And then you can renew those models over time based on updated building codes. Building codes are usually updated on like a six-year cycle. So you usually can get a good plan set. It's pretty good to use for that six-year cycle. So yeah, definitely something we can do.
Thank you.
So general to all, our provisions that will apply across the zoning categories. It starts with public improvements. So what are public improvements? This is the water and sewer that serves your house. A lot of times, this is the curb, gutter, and sidewalk. It can be foots, trails. It can be fire hydrants. It can be streetlights. It can, there's a whole list of things that we require as public improvements. Some of those public improvements are determined through impact analyses. Some of those are just, you're going to do what immediately serves your development. For the sites of development, we're talking about this four units and below, you're mostly just, you rarely have an off-site improvement affiliated with anything. You're mostly doing your edge improvements, and you're connecting to water and sewer yourself. Now, everybody will have to still connect to water and sewer, but you're not going to be on the hook for doing sidewalks and curb and gutter. So if you're in a neighborhood where there are not sidewalks, that will not be a requirement for developments of four units and less. Site planning design standards. This one was the hardest one for me. This one, they had to like tear out of my hands and my teeth because there's a lot of components about the site planning design standards that I love. This is where we get building forward design. This is where we make parking subordinate to the building. It will know, these standards do not apply to single-family homes, so therefore, they will no longer apply to four units and below. And that's okay. I think we've trained a lot of people to show, over time, that development can be quite lovely and is absolutely possible with meeting these site planning design standards. So hopefully, we've inspired even the smaller local developers who, and folks who want to be in on fourplexes, triplexes, duplexes, and beyond, that these are still great elements to incorporate in when designing a site. So I'm going to stay relentlessly optimistic on that one. All right. So our specific to use, or specific to zones. We need to make changes to our residential zones, our commercial zones, and our public and open space zones. So these are all the zones that currently allow for single-family residential. So I'm going to show you, this is where I'm going to sort of stray from this presentation and bring up the actual code amendment and show you what this looks like. Because right now, the code uses land uses that are duplex dwelling, multifamily dwelling, attached, single-family, and detached, single-family. So when you're looking at residential, those are the land, like if you came in and said, "I want to build a single-family home," you're either attached or detached, and then you're permitted use in the zone. Well, it gets so confusing when we talk about building form. Again, this gets back to that. Fourplex is not always four units in a building. It can be four units on a lot. They could each be individual cottages, like a little bungalow court. Lovely. It could also be one box that's four units. So trying to separate the idea of building form from land use, we are now listing the land uses as one unit, two unit, three unit, and four unit, and then multifamily. This also brings it closer in alignment to the building code and how the building code also looks at these land uses. So that can also be a helpful link. I, we looked at, I'm not going to say me just alone, but Alex and I looked at the possibility of trying to combine like two and three, and one and two, and three and four. It didn't work for a lot of different reasons. So at the end of the day, it feels a little monotonous to have one unit, two unit, three unit, and four unit in it, but it actually does work the best, and it leaves the least amount of complication or confusing. Now, I'm not going to dig into high occupancy housing just yet because that's where the two versions of this code comes into play. But that's where this has some fairly substantial changes, and we'll get there. So I just wanted to show you what this now looks like. You'd have multifamily residential development, one unit, two unit, and three unit. So regardless of whatever form it takes, it's fine. I will point out, though, that in some zones, we've always been pretty open, especially in our residential zones, and allowing multifamily development. So previously, multifamily was defined as three units and above on one parcel. Now it'll be five units and above on one parcel. We've always allowed multifamily in basically broad brush across many zoning districts. The only two you'll see that it's not allowed in is our manufactured housing zone and the R1N zone. R1N is Townsite, and it is basically north of the downtown. So those are some, and Plaza Vieja also has some R1N zone, typically older, more historic neighborhoods. So multifamilies will still not be allowed, but all of the middle housing types will be. With that said, multifamily previously was only permitted in a form, a building type, that was no larger than a duplex. So a good example of this is, I don't know if you've seen the bungalows up on McMillan Mesa. You see, like, there's an individual cottage, and some are duplexes, right? So that's multifamily development. There's probably like, I don't know, 90, 100 units on the property, but they're in a form that's not one big building. That is removed, so there isn't a limitation now. But I will tell you that while this looks like you can have multifamily in the RR and the ER zone, it's not happening frequently. Multifamily is always going to trigger public improvements. Okay? That trigger for public improvements in the areas that you would be most concerned of, like rural areas, that kind of thing, it's still unlikely that you're going to see that happen. Okay? But there could be the one-off situation that you'd be surprised where we can make it work. It's, it is more of the rarity, but the allowance is there. We like to, we like to pull it out and say, "We allow multifamily everywhere." Kind of, sort of, yeah.
And this also doesn't change the density of the zone? So in order to have any of those types of development, you would need enough land to have the required, the required amount of acreage to meet the density requirement?
Yeah. The other thing about middle housing is, and I'll note that there is a footnote in here, is, is that in areas that aren't served by water and sewer, septic and water hauling isn't going to work for three and four units. Okay? So there is this caveat that they're not permitted, and the state statute specifically allows us to do that. So that's all in there. Commercial zone tables, pretty much all the same thing, so I won't do, go through it. Public facility zones, but I want to jump into the transect zones. Welcome to the joy of touching transect zone tables. They're very squeaky and dirty. So we'll talk about that. What happens here? Come on. Scrolling through tables and tables. This is why it ends up being 60 pages long. Oh, this is a little tiny, just so you know. I made this little fix to accessory dwelling units. This is a holdover from the other legislative. When I had originally talked to Water Services about this, they wanted detached ADUs to have separate water meters. They're in the process of amending their own codes, and I was just conflicting with them moving things in their way. So I'm just going to keep all references to water meters outside of our code as is requested, so much better. Okay, I'll come back to high occupancy housing in a minute, but let's just jump forward to transect zones really quickly because I want to show you what this looks like. All right. So we have a number of transect zones. Nothing currently, I don't think we have anything currently in the city in T2. I found an error from the old original code, which is pretty interesting. But we're getting things fixed. So what this looks like, instead of seeing one unit, in the land use table, you have one unit residential, two-unit residential, like in the conventional zones. But then we also have to allow building types that allow for those numbers of units. Any building type, most of these building types have like a range, like an apartment house, for example, is four to 12 units. When it's in a zone that doesn't allow for multifamily development, which would be that five unit and above, we caveat that building type to say it's limited to no more than four because density is not measured in transect zones the same way it is in conventional zones. So that's how that's managed. This is what it looks like throughout. This is probably the zoning district that has the most red in terms of its building types. Again, we don't have actually anything in this transect zone. The transect zones that are probably most common that we see development in are the T3 and T4. So this is T3, for example. There's also an N1 and an N2. If you want a transect zone code lesson someday, I'll do it. I'll try not to bore you with it today. But N1 is what currently exists in neighborhoods. N2 is if you were going to go out and do a whole new, like, TND development, master plan thing, you'd use our N2 standards. Long story as to the why. Same thing here, add in the building types that gets the four units and below. Okay. So that's how the transect codes also change in relation to allowing for the middle housing types. So now I'm going to jump back to this fun presentation. And... So that is the big, what is happening in terms of the land use and the land use tables. We'll talk here in a second what happens with high occupancy housing. So here we go. So in the specific to zones section, we have what's called a high occupancy housing use. Right now, high occupancy housing has multiple categories. There is that, right now, it's four units and greater, mixed use, which is also generally four units and greater, and then single-family, duplex, and triplex. So the four units and greater automatically becomes now five units and greater. So now we've got to deal with everything that's less than four. We have to treat everything that's less than four the same as we would single-family. Okay. So we have two options in front of you. Version one, which is staff's preferred option, removes all high occupancy housing units less than five units. So there would be no more high occupancy housing, single-family, duplex, or triplex. They would just simply get removed from the code. Version two replaces single-family, duplex, and triplex high occupancy housing units with a land use category called high occupancy housing less than four units. You got four units and, well, five units and greater, and then four units and less. So super awesome language, but that's what we have to go off of. So the trigger would be the same four unit, yeah.
So, okay. I just had a question because I'm a little confused. So under version number one, if you had seven bedrooms and five bathrooms, it would be exempted?
You would build it. You would come in and pull a building permit, and you would build it. If you wanted to build a house that had seven bedrooms and five bathrooms, you would build it. No conditional use permit required. Version two, remember, we, we did have this conversation a little bit a while ago when we were making the changes to high occupancy housing about the fact that you're not really getting a lot out of the high occupancy housing, single fam, those are the only things, those are the only land uses to date that have requested a conditional use permit to date. If you want to keep it in there, this is your option, and that is that if any one of the units has seven bedrooms and five bathrooms, then it requires a conditional use permit. I will tell you, of the projects that people consider to be high occupancy housing, that's way high. That's a, you're not, I mean, people consider four and five-bedroom units to be high occupancy housing. I don't think you'll catch a lot. What generally catches most of the single-family homes is the bathrooms, not even the bedrooms. Of the, of the single-family homes you're seeing is because they generally have more than five bathrooms. So it's really about what y'all want to see. I will tell you, staff's recommendation is version one. The high occupancy housing plan never intended to regulate anything lower than multifamily. So I don't expect feedback from you today on this. I expect you to think and absorb. Run it through your mind. You know, are there some potential problems? Yes.
Do you have something?
I have lots of questions when you're done.
Yeah. All right. We'll just keep going for, for time. Let's see here, what else we've got. We have, so I told you about the accessory dwelling unit design, development, and exception. Just that water meter cleanup that really honestly has nothing to do with middle housing. We change up that high occupancy housing section to reflect either version or either option. We change up that high occupancy housing section to reflect either version or either option. So you can keep high occupancy housing for that four units and below, or get, do away with it. I also ended up making some changes to mixed use. And the reason why, it was really, it was really about when I started to adjust the land uses in the commercial table for one-unit, two-unit, three-unit, became really clear that our definition, our definitions were a little cumbersome and tricky. And so I went in and I did some general cleanup. And so I would say this mixed-use section is more like an accessory use cleanup than a primary use cleanup to metal housing. It could go away if it's confusing, but it's a ni-, there, it's a nice little cleanup to have, and I can go through those changes in detail if you're interested. Again, like, like I said, we went through and had to update all of the Form-based code transect zones to include building types that work. And there's some table, corresponding tables and the land uses. So here's the other big change. Supplementals to zones. Architectural design standards do not apply to single-family homes. They will not apply to anything four units unless. I will tell you on a duplex and a triplex, you know, when you look at architectural design standards, what we generally end up applying is like a belly band. I always joke, I'm like, does it have that's belly band? It's, so, you know, fundamentally, are we losing a lot in terms of our architectural design standards? We're not. These buildings aren't usually big enough to hit or trigger the massing standards that we have in the code, which require building articulation and those kinds of things. But building articulation honestly just increases the cost of the development as well. Landscaping standards, we don't require them for single-family homes. We will not require them for four units and below. Most people, though, tend to landscape their lots, and I don't know if you've looked outside, there's an abundance of trees out there. Don't, don't tell anybody I said that, but there's, there's a lot of trees out there. Parking standards. So we do end up, you know, treating everything like similar to similar, single-family. So this is one of the interesting changes, is that we're not, this is one of the places we can do this a little bit differently, but it doesn't make a lot of sense to do that. For the four, three, two, and attached single-family, we cannot require more than one parking space per unit. Okay? Per unit. And that's per state statute.
So of fourplex, is that one unit?
Nope, it's four units.
Four units, okay. Just making sure that you wouldn't consider it one unit and only one parking space for...
A fourplex is four units, so it would be four parking spaces. You know, honestly, when you're looking at where we've ended up in the code analysis process, this isn't part off, and this is most likely what's coming back to you anyway. So, you know, fear not, my friends, this was coming to you one way or another. But in light of this, we require more than one parking space for single-family homes. So we're changing that, so that we're only gonna require one parking space for single-family homes. It doesn't really make sense to require more of single-family in this case than we are of a duplex, a townhouse. What is happening here is, it's not, this is not mandatory, right? I mean, I doubt that people are going into the single-family home market and building single-family homes that don't have the two-car garages, but it could be an option. And there are housing types, and there are developers out there who are doing things differently and are building much smaller houses with units that don't have garages, right? Because what does it do? It lowers the cost of housing, right? It, you know, one of the big arguments in there about parking is, is not everybody wants to drive or needs to drive. And if that's not an option you want to pick in your life, then why do you have to subsidize the need for everybody else to have parking? So, throwing that out there, that is a substantial change to our parking standards, but like I said, that is where the code analysis, it's very much in alignment with where our code analysis process came out. Specific to building types, that's just a general cleanup. Again, there's an, you know, because we like to put the same thing multiple places in the code, just so it makes it really hard for the person who has to change things in the code, so they go crazy. That's what that is, it's just general cleanup. So did some work on our definitions, added the one, two, three, and four-unit residential development definitions. Also, version one has the definite, the different definitions for the high occupancy housing. And then changed our mixed-use definition as well. And I can go through more of that mixed-use information in detail if you like, or we can start with questions, and I'll get my pen ready. This one's, I mean, this is a big one. This has a lot of fundamental changes, but, I mean, I would, I would be less concerned if we hadn't already done so much work in terms of the code analysis process. You know, there is this general comfortableness in the community out there and the feedback we've received so far to go to these levels anyway. So yes, even though the state is mandating some of these things, there really has been a lot of positive feedback and push to go in this direction.
I'll open it up for questions and start with Ian.
Yeah, thanks, Tiffany, this is really good. So as I understand our role here, we're really providing you guys feedback with which of these two we think needs to move forward, and then maybe some comments internally on them, is that right?
Yeah, and I mean, if you don't like the way we've handled this, like the one-unit, the two-unit, if you think that there's a smarter, better way to do it, you know, I mean, we're open for feedback on all of it, but just knowing that there is some confines within which we're working on, yes.
Perfect, so I, I have gone through them a little bit, and I think I'll have more questions later, but I think more of my questions right now are more global, one versus two. And so as I read this, version one seems like it addresses what you guys are being asked to address by the state. And then you mentioned that staff prefers version one, so then I have to wonder, why is there a version two? Who, who said, "Make version two, and here's what we want in it"?
The reason I created version two was just, so I'd only ever had the conversation with the commission about removing single-family. And it was in the middle of having that conversation with you that I was sitting with our attorney and realized, I have a bigger problem than I thought I did. So that's when I realized, that's when I pulled that out of that amendment and started looking, and she and I worked through, what are the things that we can do? What can we do? So, you know, knowing that counsel at the time went beyond, above and beyond any policy document on high occupancy housing and wanted to regulate those smaller units, but when I say smaller, the smaller, larger units, the, the six-bedroom houses and eight-bedroom houses, which we do have some of, you know, there are handfuls of here and there that are the ones that, you know, either end up being occupied by eight individuals or they get used as short-term rentals. And yes, our hands are tied in terms of short-term rentals. I'm hoping for the day that that changes, because, I mean, I think the, the thing is, is that, you know, we're in an era of zoning reform, because zoning is being basically blamed for the high cost of housing. And if zoning reform doesn't move the needle, what, then people are gonna need to realize that there are other things that are gonna have to move the needle, and that conversation may, and hopefully, and optimistically relentlessly, is gonna move towards short-term rentals.
That's good to hear. So then I'm guessing that whenever you guys come up with, or we come up with our final version that goes forward, will the state have an opportunity to review that to make sure it's in compliance? Or you just say, "We believe this is in compliance, you move forward"?
We just, we just say, "We believe this is in compliance, and we move forward."
So do you believe version one or version two is more likely to be in compliance? Are they both fundamentally are in compliance?
I think they both meet the, the requirement components. It's really interesting, so I do participate in a, in a group where several cities join in. The one other city that I know that kind of struggled with something similar is Tucson. Their standards, it, it, for them, it's, they don't have high occupancy housing the way we do. For them, they have these group home standards, which I believe they're also dealing with legally as well. But their limitations were on a per parcel basis, rather than a per-unit basis, number of people per parcel, instead of, we are a number of people per unit. And what I can tell you, as well, is I am working on our group living definitions. I am looking at our definition of family, our definition of family is quite high. That is why we run into the issue that we have, because our definition of family is up to eight unrelated. We have, we can work through that, and we are in the process of working through that and trying to develop options on how we can manage that as well. And we are much higher than anybody else in this state.
Of, of the two versions, does one, in your mind, better align with what we just went through with the 2045 regional plan and its goals?
I don't think that the regional plan really dips into either one or the other. I mean, my biggest concern was about being in alignment with the high occupancy housing plan, since it's the specific plan arm of the regional plan. But there, again, it's even the goals and policies about high occupancy housing in the existing regional plan, which go away in the new regional plan. So there, it really is a lot more silent on high occupancy housing units as a whole than the old regional plan was. They, you know, there still isn't anything meant to address. This was meant to address the large mixed-use buildings. That, that was its whole intention.
And I think my last question is, if, I, I think about the Prop 207 scrutiny that we always think about. If either one is gonna be looked at under a microscope, it might be version two. Is there some risk with that?
I think the risk is low, because it really opens the door on the two, three, and four-bedroom units that wasn't there before. I mean, I think it's really unlikely that somebody's going to build a fourplex with a seven-bedroom unit in it. I, I think it just gets really hard to manage. I mean, color me shocked, I see things all the time I don't expect. And who knows, but, you know, somebody might have a really good reason to do it, I don't know. You know, group living is, like I said, is something we're really work, we're trying to work on and sort of sift through in terms of how we even manage group living conditions. And a lot of our definitions and uses have grown antiquated over time, and we need to work through all of that, but... Yeah. I think there's a lot of things in the code that people would be surprised are permitted outright in residential zones, but then we worry a lot more about an apartment complex that has five bedrooms. So you'd be surprised. I won't call them out.
That's all I have.
Other commissioners with questions or comments? Christine?
Thanks, Tiffany, as always, you've done a wonderful job. And I know some other cities, I've been reading in the paper, are really struggling with this. So it's glad to see you've made a tremendous progress. The only comment I have is putting some type of disclaimer. The last municipality I worked with, they added a statement to make sure that people check their covenant codes and restrictions, just to avoid any problems. Like, for example, if you go to the city of Phoenix, there's a gigantic sign, or used to be, in Development Services that says, "Please check", because you could start applying for all this and be in violation of your CCNRs. And then if the neighbors take you to court, and they prevail, it's a private right of action, and the city has nothing to do with it. So I think it's a good idea to at least warn people. And our attorney wrote something, and they put it in the code. And then as staff, when people would call, it was more that they were complaining, "Well, how come the city allows this, but our CCNRs don't"? And we would say, "Well, CCNRs can be more restrictive", and a lot of it had to do with the RV storage and stuff like that. So I think that's helpful, just to avoid, because even later, as a hearing officer, we had a couple of cases where people actually built something that met city code, and then the neighbors sued, and they tried to get some kind of waiver. It was awful. So I think that just helps people to be aware that, and most people don't even know they have CCNRs, so...
And it, I mean, and this is, this is such a great point, right? Because it's, it's also, what I didn't cover is, is that there are a lot of subdivisions where this is never gonna be allowed. Because, I mean, they don't even allow accessory dwelling units.
Yes, because I looked at mine, and I'm in, up in the Swiss Manor area, and it said, "Only one single-family unit is allowed per lot, and no commercial uses." Now, I know there's, you know, for example, Airbnbs. Now, if someone decides to take them to court, like in Phoenix, people have won. They've shut them down because they're in violation. But that is not, you gotta do those processes on your own, it's very expensive, and you may not prevail. So I just think it's good to warn people, and maybe when they come to your counter to, to, to say, "Hey, you better go back and check before you start trying to build something."
I love it. I will, I will work on something in the in-between.
Bye-bye.
Any other questions or comments from commissioners? Yes?
I just have one comment about the short-term rentals, because, you know, all these things to me connect together. So we have the on-street parking, which we're debating and talking about, and then the short-term rentals. And it's like, I, you know, I can be so much more for all of this increased density and everything else if I know that's not gonna be the use of them. So I've been doing a lot of research and just found out, which I couldn't believe, twenty bills went through last year, all-stopping committee. So you're right, until there are some major changes, it's the legislature, we're not gonna have that, our, what is it called when you, are you, you know, that we get to decide our future here? Yeah. And so, yeah, the parking then would be my, my interest too, because of, if you have a fourplex and you only have four parking spaces, then they're gonna be on the street.
Agreed. You know, the other thing is, is recognize that just because of the zoning code change, that it doesn't mean that everything comes in and changes overnight really quickly. So even, you know, it's really slow in terms of the implementation, and so there's times to always see what's happening and adjusting. And there's always a time and place that we can go back to the legislature, and we can continue to lobby for like, "Hey, this didn't really help in this way", and we think, because, you know, in a lot of ways, I love, I'm so excited to be a part of zoning reform. At the same time, there are parts of the code that even I get sad, turning away, because there, there are reasons why we do what we do, and every city should have their little, their little bit of themselves of what they celebrate and why it's important to them.
You, you also know my, my feelings for the future, that probably, I'd say fifty years from now, we're not gonna have personal vehicles. We're gonna be using Waymos or whatever they will be fifty years from now. We may not need that much parking, because we're gonna, we may need a huge parking lot for Waymo, but we might not need the individual parking for ourselves, because I, I think people are gonna say, "Hey, this is a way I can save on insurance, save on maintenance costs of a vehicle, save on, you know, ga-, gas or electricity from your home", you know, just recharging your vehicle. But fifty years from now, I think the world, I won't be here. I think the world will look a lot different. I don't think I'm gonna live to be a hundred and thirty, but I think the world will look different. But, you know, this is, it, it starts taking us that way, in a way, because even when you say a fourplex, if they only have four parking places, they're gonna park on the, on the street. Maybe thirty, forty years from now, they're not, because they're not gonna have a vehicle, because we're gonna have all these other ways to get around. I think there'll be fly-mo and...
I'm gonna, I'm gonna be scootering it from here on out.
You know, I, I think there'll be different ways to handle this, and this could be moving toward that. We're not just talking about people using their bicycles in the future. I think that's going to change anyhow. That's my own opinion. I, I teach a class and make my students think about the future, and so I have to think about the future and what it may become, and this may be leading toward that. Anyhow, thank you for a great presentation. Do we have any comments from the public or questions from the public? And if so, if you can come up to the podium and state your name and address for the record? Thank you. Thank you. Speak into the microphone.
George Metham, 2401 West Route 66, Lot 106. Okay, in the park that we're at, we have the same problem. You have one spot for a lot of the homes. Then in the winter time, when they have to keep the, the snows plowed from the roads, where are people supposed to park? And then like, you go in Presidio, they have these tiny streets. And when two cars come together, you can barely pass because they're parked. And then what if there's a fire or something and you have to get emergency equipment in and out? I, I don't think, even for an apartment, one parking spot per unit, at least today, is inadequate.
I mean, is adequate. You mean it, it is.
It's not adequate.
Right. Okay. Anybody want to answer that question?
What I can tell you about Presidio is, is that our codes currently don't allow street widths that small anymore for public roads. And the, the parking space issue, um, you know, it, it is about folks being able to choose whether or not they obtain a parking space as part of their residence. So, like I said, you know, nothing is likely to change with the developments that are there and existing. But we are likely to see some changes over time.
For new development.
For new development, yes.
Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Thank you. Any other questions or comments from the public? All right.
So just to give you schedule.
Yeah.
Uh, we'll be back for a public hearing on October 29th. There's a lot of stuff in here, so if you have questions in the in-between, please feel free to connect with Alex and she'll work them through me, to me. And, uh, you know, we'll help try to answer any questions or concerns that you have on this amendment. And thank you all for being available on June 29th instead of the 22nd.
I think you mean October, but not June.
I don't, oh my gosh.
But I'll look if I'm available June 29th.
I don't know. October, October.
October 29th, yes. You said that first and then you followed up by thanking us for June 29th.
I think my brain is broken.
But, um, yeah. What is that? October.
29th.
29th. So. Yeah, because, so we're not doing the 22nd. We're moving that to the 29th. Let me edit that while I'm sitting here, because I'll never remember to do that. Okay. There, all right. Tiffany, thank you for that excellent presentation. Sounds like tons of work went into this whole thing and I don't know what you're going to do with your life now that that's over.
I don't know either.
Probably get something else that you have to.
I was going to say, we have a list.
Yeah.
I'm pretty sure there's a fire hose outside my office.
Are there any items, miscellaneous items to and from commissioners? Hearing none. It is 4:58 and we are adjourned. Thank you.